Ready to go. Five, four, three, two.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. I now declare the 2025-2026 reorganization meeting of the Board of Education of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, New York in session. This reorganization meeting of the Board of Education is called for the purpose of selecting board officers for the ensuing year, administering the Oaths of Office, designating bank depositories, and for such other business as may come before this meeting. Just so you know, this agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they are made and again after the meeting on the public board minutes where, which are available on the district's website. Ms. Romero, can you read it in Spanish, please?
Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche está sujeta a cambios en el momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se anotará en el momento en que se realice y nuevamente después de la reunión en el acta de la junta pública que están disponibles en el sitio web del distrito.
Thank you. We would like to remind everyone that translation and interpretation services are available during this meeting. If you need assistance, please let us know and we will be happy to accommodate you.
Queremos dejarle al público saber que tenemos transla- transacción en español y si se necesita en algún momento lo teneré, lo tenemos disponible.
I now ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Tobiasin, can you please lead us?
I pledge the allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I will now administer the Oath of Office. Dr. Patricia De Jesus, can you please step forward? You're just gonna repeat after me. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of School Board Member.
The duties of the Office of School Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Ms. Tobiasin, can you please step forward? I'm sorry, Dr. Jesus. Can you please sign? Come over and sign. Yes, I was. And thank you.
Usually this is more relative, just catching right up.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of School Board Member.
The duties of the Office of School Board Member.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Yes. That's as, I was gonna say. Pastor John Williams was unable to attend tonight's meeting. He has the third seat for the board. He will be sworn in later this week in the board office. Okay, at this time, I will begin the roll call. Dr. De Jesus. Mr. Estrada.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah.
Mr. Perrino. Mr. Rett. Ms. Romero. Ms. Tobiasin. Mr. Freddie Williams. Pastor Williams. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
Approved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Mr. Perrino. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, nominations are now open for the position of President of the Board of Education for the 2025-2026 term. May I have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Edwin Estrada.
Second on that.
Third on that.
Thank you. Okay, I'll do roll call. Please state yes or no when I call your name for the nomination of President of the Board for the 2025-26 school year. So, Dr. De Jesus. Mr. Estrada.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Perrino.
Yes.
Ms. Rett.
Yes.
Ms. Romero. Ms. Tobiasin.
Yes.
Mr. Freddie Williams. And Pastor Williams is absent. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown hereby appoints Mr. Edwin Estrada as President of the Board of Education. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the School Board President.
The duties of the School Board President.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I need a nomination for the position of Vice President of the Board of Education for the 20-
I'd like to nominate Denise Romero.
Second on that.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll, I will do a roll call. Please state yes or no when I call your name. Dr. De Jesus.
Yes.
Mr. Estrada.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Perrino.
Yes.
Ms. Rett.
Yes.
Ms. Romero. Ms. Tobiasin.
Yes.
Mr. Freddie Williams. And Pastor Williams is absent. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Enlarged City School District of Middles- Middletown hereby, excuse me, hereby appoints Ms. Denise Romero as the Vice President of the Board of Education. Congratulations. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the School Board Vice President.
The duties of the School Board Vice President.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm all good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
I'll now turn the meeting over to the Board President. Thank you, Fran.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just wanna, before we get to the district clerk's oath, I believe we just made history. I believe Denise will be the first ever Hispanic female in a leadership role in the history of our school district, and for the first time ever, two Hispanics will be part of board leadership as well. I didn't think about that until she was being sworn in, so congratulations, I'm making history. Puerto Rico and the Dominican Republic live again close to each other. So now I'd like to do the Oath of Office for our district clerk, so please repeat after me. Raise your right hand, good. I, Crystal Monchery.
I, Crystal Monchery.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of District Clerk.
The duties of the Office of District Clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Now you're stepping in again.
My pleasure. Can you take this with you?
Let's give our district clerk a great round of applause. She does an outstanding job. Each and every year. At this time, I'd like a motion that reads the following for our annual appointments. Resolved at the reading of the annual board appointments for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, be waived and the appointments listed be approved. Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Ms. Romero. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for Financial Memorandum 1A, numbers one through five.
So moved.
By Mr. Moore. Seconded by Ms. Romero. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need a motion for approval to delegate the Superintendent of Schools, the authorization to approve attendance at a conference is funded in the current year budget by any employee, officer, or board member of the district for the school year beginning July 1st, 2025. Moved by Ms. Rett.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need a motion for the approval to grant the superintendent authorization to make budget transfer in the amount up to $5,000. Moved by Ms. Romero. Seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the election inspectors for the 2025-2026 school year.
So moved.
By Mr. Perrino. Seconded by Ms. Romero. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval of the superintendent to apply for grants and aids, both local, state, and federal.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Moore. Seconded by Mr. Perrino. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval of school board organization memberships, 2025 through 2026. I believe it's NISBA, OXPA, Mid-Hudson School Study Council, and Small Cities, and the Caucus of Black School Board Members, correct? Okay. Need a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Dr. De Jesus. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting for the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. Moved by Ms. Tobiasin.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. So congratulations to all, as we now move into our regularly scheduled school board meeting. We don't need to stop at all, right? Mr. R- we don't need to stop at all, right, Mr. Rocky? Go right through. So, we'd like to call the July 1st, 2025, regular school board meeting for the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, our first for the fiscal school year. A reminder that this agenda was prepared in advance of tonight's meeting. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting. Any changes will be noted at the time they're made. And again, after the meeting on the public board minutes, which are available on the district's website. And we'd also like to remind everyone that translation and interpretation services are available during this meeting. If you need assistance, please let us know, and we'll be happy to accommodate you. And if everybody could please rise once again for our pledge of allegiance for our regular school board meeting led by Mr. Perino. And Mr. Perino, do we have moments of silence at all? Yes, and we'll have moments of silence, so if you could stay standing.
Thank you, President Estrada. The first moment of silence this evening is for Susan Bassett. Susan Bassett, the wife of Bill Bassett, who was the former superintendent of Orange Oaks Debowses and also superintendent of Pine Bush Schools. Susan Bassett was also an instructional member of the Twin Towers staff for a number of years. I worked with Sue, knew Sue, found her very professional. She often used the media center for project-based instruction. A very strong champion of reading. In her personal life, she served the community as a member of the St. Paul's Roman Catholic Church, participating in charitable endeavors. Leisure time, she liked to travel and spending time with children and grandchildren. Very wonderful individual, very soft-spoken, but she got the job done. She served on a number of committees, and she never looked at the clock. She made some very good points. Second moment of silence this evening is for Susan Beffer. Now, Susan was not a member of the district. However, she did support the district in a number of ways. Firstly, whenever you asked Susan to come to speak about reading, speak about her books, and by the way, she was listed on the New York Times Bestseller List more than once, she would do it very gladly, gave her time. I remember she would spend all day speaking with the kids, speaking with the faculty members. Can't say enough good things about her. For other districts outside the area, she used to get quite a stipend, but not for us. Again, a very strong advocate of reading and a very giving individual. So, please remember, Ms. Bassett and Ms. Beffer, and your thoughts and prayers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. And now for the mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, Dr. DeJesus.
We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously support our diverse students' population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Dr. DeJesus. Ms. Monchery, roll call.
Dr. DeJesus?
Here.
Mr. Estrada?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Perino?
Here.
Mr. Rett?
Here.
Ms. Romero?
Yeah.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Yeah.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Here.
Pastor Williams? Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Rett?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of June 18th, 2025?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Romero, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for administrative personnel memorandum one A, number one? Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Ms. Romero. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need a motion for instructional personnel memorandum one B, numbers one through 18. These are a lot of our summer appointments. Moved by Mr. Moore? Seconded by Dr. DeJesus. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for non-instructional personnel memorandum one C, numbers one through 10?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Romero, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for financial memorandum two D, numbers one through six? Moved by Ms. Tobiasin, seconded by Dr. DeJesus. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for special services memorandum one E, numbers one through two?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. DeJesus, seconded by Mr. Freddie Williams. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. No change orders, right, today?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to board member community updates. We'll start off with Mr. Moore.
Great. I just want to give a huge shout out to my ladies finest basketball team. We just wrapped up our long, very long, and great experience overall, season, spring season. The girls really, really showed a great level of development, passion, and courage to face some of the East Coast top talent, that I must say. So, I just want to give them a huge shout out and definitely look forward to seeing them back in August when we restart again. And this gives me an opportunity to say I've officially completed my first year as a school board member. And it's been a huge?
Congratulations. Nice job.
Huge benefit, and honestly, hopefully, I've been a great asset to everyone here. And I look forward to many more years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Perino?
Thank you so much. Of course, we'll be celebrating the July 4th holiday soon. And please remember that we would not be celebrating this if it wasn't for all the men and women who, many of them gave their lives so we could be independent, so we can continue to be independent. The second thing I'd like to speak about, a number of our students received awards and recognition at the 43rd Annual Orange County Youth and Adult Event at Orange County Community College. Now, what this event does, it honors youth and adults who exemplify civic engagement, positive character, and a commitment to making a difference in the lives of others, whether it's school, community, service organizations, faith-based initiatives, or individual efforts. Virtually, can be nominated by the schools, can be nominated by members of the county, can be nominated by the city, the town, and so on. Now, as I said, some of our students received the awards, and I'm going to mention three of these. Denziah received this award, and Denziah is the son of our new vice president, Denise Romero. Norma, Norma Veiler, received the award. And Norma, of course, was our first student board member. And the third person who received the award, Seth Monchery. And Seth is the son of Crystal Monchery. And I want to add that Seth will be working at Thrall Library in the reading program.
Awesome.
So, very good. Congratulations to everybody who received awards. Now, that segues me in to the time I have left to talk about reading for a minute. I've been speaking about reading for many, many years. It's reading, we used to have a program in the district, the RIF Program. Reading is fundamental, and so it is. And I'll speak more about that as time goes on, as the summer goes on. But I want to just key on firstly, a program in Thrall Library this year. Thrall Library, you see, July 7th to August 8th. Registration begins at 16th. You can sign up online, or you can call the library. The new youth service librarian is a very affable lady, Teresa Pazak. I hope I'm pronouncing her name right. But at any rate, she has a wonderful five-week program that she's designed with help from others. And it not only involves reading, it involves crafts, it involves various contests. It's just a great opportunity for students to get involved and read during the summer. Extremely important that they do that. It's a fundamental skill, it's a foundation skill. People often ask me, when should students start preparing for graduation? Well, it starts in kindergarten, actually. It's a long road, but it starts in. And one of the reasons you cannot do anything without being a, you have to be littered. And I'm done, I don't go over my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Rett?
Good evening, everyone. I don't have the picture available, but I just wanted to give a shout out to my cast members with our play that we performed down in Westchester this Sunday, Child of God II. It was really good, it was really special, and it reflects a lot of things regarding addictions in so many different ways. So, again, kudos to you guys, and maybe I'll post the picture next time around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Ms. Tobiasin?
I just want to comment, as many have the past week, about our most successful graduation. The weather cooperated, the students were phenomenal, as well as all of the staff that was involved, including, I believe, both the Town of Walk Hill and the City of Middletown Police. I've heard some comment, where parking and the traffic. But I think despite the fact that we had 589? 593 students graduate. It was just amazing. And I can't, as I said, I've been on the board for a while, and I have to say, this was the best graduation ceremony for everyone involved. And I want to just acknowledge what a great job was done.
Thank you, Ms. Tobiasin. Dr. DeJesus?
I'm going to echo some of what Rose said. I've been at several graduations as well, and I thought that this one moved very smoothly. I like the fact that there were graduates on both sides. When my kids graduated, they didn't have that. It was like a platform stand that you had to walk up, and it took forever to get to Z. The pictures, that was phenomenal, to have that up there, to see the students up there. A lot of like, I liked also was that their attire. It was pretty much everybody, it was consistency with what they was wearing. I thought that was really great to have that slideshow up there. It was awesome. And for you, Mr. Estrada, again, I've been to a lot of graduations, and I like the fact that when you walked down, there were so many positive comments from the students, from the scholars, as you walked down, and kind of like you made your triumphant entry. They liked that. So, it's kind of different. So, it shows that we, as a board, can relate to what they were doing. And so, congratulations to all of the graduates of 2025.
Thank you, Dr. DeJesus. Mr. Freddie Williams?
I'd like to echo the sentiments of my co-trustees. The graduation was awesome. And you can never duplicate that energy, that the kids have, the smiles and just the excitement. And living in this city my entire life, knowing a lot of these kids and their parents, even their grandparents, and just seeing, you know, just like I said, the excitement and just the future in them. And I forgot her name, but the second young lady that spoke, and she showed a lot of emotion. And I've sat through probably, because even the 2020, we had multiple graduations. So, I think this was my eighth. And she really got to me. She said, "I almost lost it right there." And but the energy she spoke with, and it was just amazing. Like, it was the best graduation that I've been a part of in Middletown, for sure. And Mr. Estrada, your rock star presence up there in the stands was definitely appreciated and noted. So, that was awesome. I have two images that I sent earlier. So, this is our fourth annual It Takes a Village BBQ. It's going to take, it's going to be on September 6th at Davich Park, the Back Pavilions. It's been awesome. It's grown every year with multiple supporters, including the Middletown Police Department, Middletown Parks and Rec, the City of Middletown School District. So many hands have made this a lighter lift through the years. I remember, if I'm not mistaken, the first year, 2022, maybe like 500 people. And I was blown away. I'm like, wait, this is great. And since, I mean, it's been thousands upon thousands of people. But the school district jumped in, the superintendent greeting came in with the food service and just so many materials, and the police department doing all the cooking, and then the fire department chimed in, and Parks and Rec. So, it's become a really, really big event. I want to say like the biggest event in the city of the year. So, look forward to that. Come out, bring your families. Everything is free. It's just a great community event. We have a lot of Middletown City staff, Middletown Police Department, the Fire Department, the district employees, staff. It's good to see the kids interact with the police and the Fire Department and the teachers and staff on a different level, you know, on a community level. So, that was the basis of this whole thing. We give out thousands of book bags and supplies. So, that's on, I have to go over a little bit. That's on September 6th. And this one is the Summer League that Middletown U-Sports sponsors. It's our third annual. It's at Mon Hagen Middle School, grades fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth. Those are the divisions. All the information's on there. You can message us at MiddletownUsports@gmail.com. And our regular one is MiddletownUsports.com. There's information on there. Anybody going through like a financial strain and your kid can't pay, we always like to chip in, and we can grant your kid a sponsorship for this league. And this league starts next week, next Wednesday. That date escapes me. But yeah, it's all good things. Thank you.
Thank you. What time is it on the 14th that you start?
We start, the vendors, we do one there at 11:00. It's really 1:00 to 4:00, but you know, there's a lot of prep. So, and we also want to give a shout out to the Honor Society and Mr. Jennifer Youngens. She sends over, I mean, so many honor students, I think 25 to 30 honor students, and they always help us out any which way we need. Anybody wants to volunteer, you can reach out to us. We actually have a Facebook events page coming up by next week. Mrs. Monchery always helps out with that. Her and her husband Stevenson are awesome. That's another one. Middletown Care Coalition is also another partner in with us.
That's just on the 14th, or it's every week?
So, I was talking about the barbecue, the 14th you're talking about for the?
Yeah.
For the summer?
For the summer basketball league.
Yeah, the summer league is going to be, we're trying to see how many registers we have, because we have multiple days. But right now, it would just be that date and every week after.
Every Monday thereafter?
Yep, every Monday thereafter, yep, yep. Got a little off track there, but there's more information I had to get out.
And if anybody wants to donate for the village? And if anybody wants to donate for the village, or participate in It Takes a Village Day, any organizations or individuals, they should contact you?
Yes, they can contact me. Also, the, the Facebook page that's coming up. And then also Stevenson Monchery is going to, today we were just discussing it. He's going to have a, he's going to create a Google, what's the word I'm looking for?
Like a barcode?
Yeah, a Google form. And people can go on there and, and put their logo and all their information, and that'll be shared on the events page also.
Thank you. Ms. Romero.
The graduation was amazing, and I want to congratulate all the graduates of the class of 2025. On behalf of Twin Towers, they would like to wish everyone a safe and, a safe and healthy summer. The new scholar orientation will be August 12. They also want you all to know that if you need anything, please do feel free to reach out over the summer, and they're looking forward to the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romero, and I do want to, many thanks to what was really an amazing year for us as a school board and as a school district, despite the tragedies that we had early on, especially during the school year. But everyone, you, you talk about It Takes a Village. It took a village to put that graduation together. We needed Mother Nature to cooperate, and she did. Our security staff, making sure that everybody stayed safe. We had about, you know, somewhere between 4,500 and 5,000 people there at that graduation ceremony. I want to thank the superintendent and everybody for making the call to start a half an hour late to allow everybody who was in line the opportunity to come in. We didn't want folks to miss the event. As well, our support staff from food service for the barbecue afterwards, to all of our faculty advisors and the teachers who were there coordinating the logistics of the event throughout the afternoon. And more importantly, our parents and guardians and friends and family, they were great in the stands, very respectful of everyone. They waited till all the graduates were announced. So, kudos to everybody who showed up as a spectator, because, you know, sometimes, not every year, it's gotten as smooth as it did this year. But everyone was very respectful. I want to thank all the board members who partook. Everybody had a hand in the graduation. And then obviously, our students, our scholars who graduated 593 strong. We hope that number is going to grow beyond 600 when our August graduation rate is completed. The preliminary indication is that our June graduates were a little bit over 88%. Last year, at the same time, we were at 87, so there's improvement there from year over year. And we hope to get into, well into the 90s by the time we get done with our August graduates. So, a lot to be proud of in the district, and we hope to keep the momentum going for this upcoming school year. So, thank you to everybody. Awesome job. Now, we'll move on to our public participation. The board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to 40 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes. The public is not permitted to discuss topics and/or matters involving specific individuals, and speakers must sign in prior to speaking. Speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. Ms. Romero.
La junta designará una parte de su agenda de reunión para comentarios públicos por un periodo de hasta 40 minutos. A cada persona se le permitirá hasta cuatro minutos. No se permite al público discutir temas y/o asuntos que involucren a personas específicas. Las personas deben registrarse y firmar antes de hablar. Las personas no pueden ceder su tiempo a otras personas.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. Would anybody like to partake in our public participation section? Nope. So, we'll move on. Any letters that we received? Nope. Thank you, Ms. Monchery. Superintendent update. Superintendent Creed.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to underscore much of what was shared already this evening. Express my heartfelt gratitude to everyone who played a role in making this year's graduation ceremony such a tremendous success. Achieving, as President Estrada already said, achieving a graduation rate of 88.5% is an outstanding milestone, one that reflects dedication, resilience, and a collaboration of the entire school community. It's evidence that we are one Middletown. To the class of 2025 team, cohort 2021, your commitment to ensuring that every young person had access to every single resource that they needed to achieve their goals and walk across that stage was commendable. You have changed lives, and I personally share in the community's gratitude for all of your efforts. To our school board, your unwavering support, energy, and enthusiasm throughout the year made that graduation ceremony possible. Thank you for providing us with guidance, leadership, and just a true joy in this work. To our Buildings and Grounds team, thank you for your tireless work in setting up and breaking down for the ceremony. We did multiple run-throughs and changed a bunch of stuff, and they're always with a win-win mindset. We appreciate that. So many people, security staff, your behind-the-scenes efforts to ensure that the stadium was fully checked with walkthroughs and the support of our community police agencies prior to anybody even arriving make us feel really safe. And the day of your activities to ensure that people got to come enjoy the ceremony while maintaining our safe protocols was incredible. Our musicians, our health services team, the technical support team, oh my goodness, the communications team, so much energy and enthusiasm behind making sure that there was appropriate communication leading to the ceremony, the day of the ceremony, and then immediately following the ceremony. They flooded our communication channels with thank yous, notes of appreciation, and images from the event, which were really, really special. To our food services team, they provide us with a ton of support leading up to the ceremony with all of the events that we put on to celebrate the graduates. And then after the ceremony, they give us a nice opportunity to come together as a team and celebrate over a meal, so that is really appreciated. There are just so many individuals, because a ceremony like this does not take place without the energy and effort of an entire team of people. It is really an epic event. Our community partners, there are so many of you, police, fire, medical services, the city, the town, the list goes really on and on. Thank you for standing alongside us, being proud to celebrate our success with, with sometimes more energy than us, but contributing really in meaningful ways to our efforts. Your partnership is really valuable. And to our families, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for trusting us. Thank you for believing in us. Thank you for showing up for the ceremony and showing out in a really positive way. We appreciate your care, your patience, and we share in the joy of the milestone of your young person, and we will really miss the class of 2025. It was a special one. I think that the ceremony on Friday is a demonstration that when we work together towards a shared vision, joy just is in abundance. So, thank you for all for being a part of our journey for the 2425 school year. We can't wait to celebrate in August. We have a really dedicated group of young people that are pushing to make graduation a reality, and we have a tremendous amount of energy behind them this summer, making sure that they reach their goals too. So, stay tuned, because we'll be back at the end of August with an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Creed. And I do want to mention a couple of things on that. One, Mr. Perino, do you know which fire companies were there with the flag? Microphone. The Excelsior, okay. Well, I do want to thank the fire department for that wonderful American flag display. I mentioned it in, when I was doing the speech, and I think it's awesome that they come out and support each year our graduates as well. I do need to make a shout out to our tech crew. So, back in April, when I first was trying to figure out, you know, what to say at graduation, I don't like talk, I like talking, but not at graduations typically, because I think our scholars, it's about them, it's about their day, and they don't want to hear, have somebody come up to a podium and just, you know, talk and quote and all that other stuff. So, that's when I had an idea about putting a video together. And, you know, I'm very well-known that I come up with big ideas, and then I step back and watch other people kind of put that together. And our tech crew, Victor's back there with our sound folks, Kevin Leonis, Paul Fox, Brian Sebag, Vesh Vora, you know, Justin Wiley, Marcus Rodriguez. I could go on and on with, with the names of that crew. They're amazing. Every time we see videos up here of our community and our, and our school district, they're the ones behind the scenes who helped put it together, and they go unsung typically. So, one day, I think we need to bring them as a tech crew up here and hand out some certificates for them, because, you know, they do yeoman's work out there as well. And then I also did want to mention, with the utmost dignity and respect with which the school district at graduation honored our fallen comrades, our fallen scholars, and Tefusi TC Reed, and also Hannah Reggio. Their families were there. They were part of the graduation ceremony, a difficult day for them. But we also wanted to make sure that we remembered them. And I, I think we did a, a pretty good job of making sure we honored them and respected their memory on that very important day as well. So, I want to thank everybody for that. Moving on to our board member conferences or professional development shareouts. I don't think we have any unless anybody has any. I know there'll be more coming up as we get ready for our New York State school boards. Do you have one, John?
Yeah, I'll hold it though.
No, you could do it now.
Is it all right? He's looking at.
Yeah. We're doing good time. It's 7:35, so, of course, I just gave ourselves a kiss of death, but.
Very interesting. I, I believe that we're going to hear more about charter schools in the next couple of years. And believe me, I'm not being political. When we present these, we're apolitical this board. I just research things, and we all research things, and I report to the best of my ability. So, there was a Oklahoma case, and the Oklahoma setup for charter schools is very similar to New York State. The, a charter school, of course, is a school, quote, chartered, or you can say licensed by a state board, and receives public money from the state. So, what happened was the, the Oklahoma State Board approved a charter application submitted by the Catholic IH Diocese of Oklahoma to create an academy, the Isadora of Seville Academy, which would have been the first charter nation, the nation's first charter religious charter school. And they were very honest about this. We're a religious charter school. We're going to incorporate religion into all of our subject matters. So, the state board had approved this, but the Attorney General invalidated it, saying public funds could not be used to operate a, a religious school. So, the, the, it went on and on through the courts until it reached the Supreme Court. Now, what happened was this. There were eight justices involved in this, eight justices that had an opinion. I don't know why the, or who the justice was that was not involved, maybe on vacation or ill or so on, I don't know. But the court issued a one-line ruling, a decision called a per curiam decision, which per curiam means for the court. They issued this, and they let the Oklahoma court's decision stand, which invalidated the, the application of the Academy of Seville. Now, one thing about this is, New York State has presently, I believe, 425 charter schools. Their limit is 460. But what was interesting about this decision, because it was four to four, it was a split decision, it is not considered precedential. In other words, this can very well come up again. And the court may, the court may, depending on the justices, they may find, they may have, it may have a different outcome. So, I, I think we should all be aware of this. And it seems to me, what's happening in Washington is that money's going to be funneled to schools such as chartered schools, private schools, and non-public schools. So, I don't know what ramifications this is going to have right now, but we'll have to see. Depends if we get the money that we normally do, or will be less. Very important concept here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino, and I think, you know, a lot, some of that's going to be driven with how successful we are as a public school system, right, in Middletown too. The more successful you are, the more folks want to come to our district and not form a charter school. But also, you know, there was a moment in time when we had a couple that were, when we were struggling, right, academically here. We had several who tried to set up charter schools here, and that's still going to be out there. The regulations allow for it. The courts are more favorable to it now. So, definitely something to keep an eye on, because it is going to affect our taxes and, and our folks here.
Definitely.
Yep. Does anybody have any, anything else in regards to conferences or professional development shareouts? No, well, committee reports the only thing, because since this is our first meeting, we don't have any committee reports. I had emailed the board, and I think, Dr. DeJesus, I sent it to your personal email, because I don't think you were yet on the school district email. So, everybody has with them the committee assignments from this past year. What I would ask is that over the next week, if there's folks that want specific ones, please let me know. I know, just to give you a little bit of a share out, Pastor Williams has requested to be part of the diversity committee this year, and also as a co-liaison to the City of Middletown. I know Mr. Tobiasin would like to be the representative to the City of Middletown. It's a good opportunity for us to change some things. I know Mr. Freddie Williams is interested in being the liaison, the liaison to the high school this year. So, we are going to make some, let's look to make some changes. Everybody's been kind of in the same school buildings for a couple of years in a row now. So, it's good to kind of shake things up and get people a little taste of different schools. And also, obviously, we need new representatives for Carter Elementary as well, since Mr. Mitchell Williams is no longer on the board. So, please take a look at the committee assignments. Probably Dr. DeJesus' policy would be an important one as a new board member to sit on in addition to other interests that you might have. So, if you want to take a look at that, and Mitch was on that one as well, so that might be a good addition to that. So, today is Thursday. Let's get, today's Tuesday, so let's give each other a week. Is that fair? To get me information on what, and what you can do is take the sheet that I emailed you and where it says 25, 26, just put your name down, and then we'll, you know, we'll go little by little. There's not going to be, we're not in any hurry right now to do things. And same with the building assignments. If you guys have an open mind, and pick two schools, so that way, in case the first one, we go in a different direction, you're okay with a different one. And myself, as board president, I'll just, whatever's left is what I'll take, you know, for folks. Mr. Rat.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a policy update, something that we need to pay particular attention to. Well, first and foremost, our business manager, Mike Tuttle, is reviewing the contract with NISBA. And all intents and purposes, there's a better, more response time program than the one we have with Area 1. And, and for the most part, most other districts use this NISBA program, and, you know, they're pretty comfortable with it as it pertains to policies. We have three policies that we need to really look at and address. One is Policy 81. One is Policy 8113, extreme heat conditions. The other one's 5695, student personnel, electronic devices. And then another one that needs to be amended as soon as possible, Policy 531, use of district credit card needs. That needs to be amended. So, as I mentioned early to the policy members, I'm going to reach out to you, me and the clerk, Ms. Montrie, to see what days you guys are available so that we can kind of look at these and just be able to tweak them so that we can have them on time for when we need to move on them.
So, right now, we have, Mr. Redd is Chair of the Policy Committee. There won't be a co-chair for right now because Mr., that was Mr. Mitchell Williams, but Ms. Romero was already on the Policy Committee, as was Mr. Moore, and now we're going to add Dr. DeJesus to that committee. And so, those will be the folks that can meet with Curtis for this immediate need that we have to review certain policy before the end of the month, and then if there are any changes to the Policy Committee, we'll take that on later on. Sound good with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other committee reports early on? No? So, we'll move on to Roundtable to finish up our first meeting of the school year. We'll start off with Mr. Moore.
I actually did leave out the fact that I did actually truly, truly enjoy the graduation. It definitely was a great one. And that's, when you think about just the dynamics of the, I believe it was the students from Carter with the, Maple Hill? With the drums. It was just so much going on that provided a level of entertainment, excitement, joy, and just a huge drive towards like the legacy of the district. So, I just wanted to add my piece about that. It was definitely a good, good experience, especially with the weather. You know, I think that was probably added to the experience, especially coming from a year that was extreme heat, and under those gowns could get extremely hot. So, other than that, you know, I'm just looking forward to this, this school year. I think we have made tremendous strides towards, you know, a level of excellence, and I think just with the collaboration of all of us as a team and as, you know, trusted, you know, trustees to the district that we are adding a unique approach that is definitely beneficial and a huge asset to the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Perino?
Thank you. You know, we have been handed out some, in our workshop, some great books, and that appeal to students also that could be read and should be read by students. One of these for everyone, Jason Reynolds, who was a speaker at the high school. And I just want to read one passage on this. "At 16, I thought I would have made it by now. At 18, I said 25 is when I'd make my first million. At 25, I moved back in with my mother. Bill collectors breathing on me like Brooklyn summer. And now at almost 28, I'm just, well, I'm almost 28." Now, if this doesn't, this is simple but yet complicated and profound. If this doesn't call for a course, or courses in financial literacy and planning, I don't know what does. So, we've talked about that before. I've mentioned it, I know Denise Romero mentioned it, Ed has mentioned it around a number of us. So, this should be incorporated somehow into the curriculum, and I do feel that when the new graduation requirements are, come about, that this will be one component, a course on financial literacy, which is, is very well, is very much needed.
And Amy mentioned they do have, start with courses in the middle school in financial literacy now.
Good. And I think we should even have it in the, maybe in the elementary buildings. Very simple, of course, but.
There used to be a program that is no longer a part of Junior Achievement of the Hudson Valley, used to come out, and they used to do, because I used to teach the course sometimes, all the way to the elementary school level, and we do, they still do financial literacy? So, they're doing that.
Very necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Mr. Rat?
Yes, I could build on with what Mr. Perino was talking about. Jason Reynolds, an incredible writer. He came here, of course, we talked about that, but I just got into reading a couple of his books, and it's really engaging. I read the first one, Ghost, and now I'm on Fatima. I mean, this guy is fantastic. Again, it was just awesome that we was able to spread his wings, his opportunities, just share what he does, you know, as far as writing, and the kids really enjoyed that. Just wanted to piggyback on that. Also, I want to talk about the graduation. I'd be remiss if I didn't say anything. I thought it was fantastic again, and the weather held up. We added some different components, you know. Of course, with you doing your little special thing, coming down out of the crowd. Yeah, the zip line.
We got it. We'll hold you to that.
But I thought it was really well, and I really enjoyed the opportunity to be able to share some opening remarks and being a part of that also, I'm sure. And, you know, I got a lot of good feedback in the community and from parents that they really enjoyed it, and it was just very serene. It was just nice and smooth, you know, this year as compared to, you know, we had a couple kinks with the weather and just maybe one or two people not too happy, but I thought we, thumbs up, kudos, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Rat. Ms. Tobiason?
I have nothing to report, so for the good of the order, I'll move to the, across the tables.
Thank you, Ms. Tobiason. Dr. DeJesus?
Thank you. So, I want to say congratulations to you, Rose. Congratulations to you, Ms. Romero. Congratulations to Mr. Williams in his absence. The three Rose that were there were, those are my family members, so I'm grateful that they were here to come out, and I want to thank those that supported me in this process and as I embark upon this new journey, this new endeavor. I look forward to working with each and every one of you and tapping into your skill sets as well as letting you borrow a little bit of mine, but I'm excited about this new journey. And so, I'm grateful, I'm honored, and I'm thankful, and I look forward to these next three years and working with the team.
Thank you, Dr. DeJesus. Ms. Romero?
I want to welcome you, Dr. DeJesus. I know you're going to be an asset to our team, so happy to have you here. I also want to take the time to recognize, well, not recognize, but commend everyone who thought about the families of the students who are no longer here. I thought that was very powerful, and it was very beautiful and heartfelt, and I'm just looking forward to next year. That's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And so, I want to thank Mr. Iraqi because I sent him a text while everybody was talking because I know I forgot people on the tech side and stuff like that. But also, our own Caroline Woodward, who's over here, and also Kevin Witt, our community liaison. Those are the wonderful pictures that everybody sees on the website over the last few days of all of our graduates, and it's amazing. Great feedback from the community on those, so we want to make sure we thank both Caroline and Kevin as well. And then the other tech folks who helped out, Alana Zeladon Suriel, Kevin Moore, Bev Rodriguez, Josh Beltran, and the Gertech crew, Anthony Ricci, Carrie Moissette, also Jim and Isaac from Thunder Sound, which is an outside company that we had come in and help us with the run-throughs. Awesome job by all of them. If I forgot any names, now you can blame Victor, not me, about it. So, with that. I said, yeah. I did say Victor. He was the first name I mentioned earlier. So, I do want to thank all of them because they all deserve a shout-out for, for an amazing graduation. And I'm going to end on a couple of things. First of all, I'm honored to be President of the Board for another year. I thank you guys for having faith in me to help lead the team for this upcoming school year. You know, anybody sitting at this table, at these tables can do this job. It just so happens that I have a lot of gray hair from years and years of experience that kind of helps out a little bit. Plus, as Mr. Moore reminds us all, I have the time so far to be able to do it. So, I do want to thank everybody, but you guys make it a little bit easy for me, which is great. Also, you know, we had other individuals who, you know, Mr. Redd, Mr. Perino, who we talked about as far as nominations for Vice President as well as Ms. Romero, and it could have been anybody. You know, we have confidence in all the individuals, you know, regardless of who's sitting here and who's sitting there, any of us can do this job, and that's what's great about this particular Board of Education. We work together as a team, we do a lot of work in our committee assignments, we all have different strengths that we bring to the table, and we all rely on those strengths. None of us here, I think, sit here thinking that we can do everything. We know we have weaknesses and we have strengths, and we kind of build off of that. So, I do want to thank Pastor Williams, Freddie Williams had to leave, but everybody here for coming together for another hopefully strong year. And as we said to the public in the beginning of last year, there have been moments in time when this Board of Education will fail this year. And so, please don't be shy in coming out and letting us know about it or reaching out to individual school board members. We do obviously have protocol here, so keep things unchaotic, and the best that we can follow that will mean that we'll get an answer as quick as possible for you, and if we need to improve, then that's what we'll do as a Board of Education. So, the moment you think you know everything is the moment that you fail. With that being said, if I can have Mrs. Montrie for our next school board meeting beforehand, if we can email out to all the board members again what our board norms were, as well as our, what our goals were last year and our board norms, and we'll use that to begin a template discussion as we start to get into our work, summer workshops, and trying to see if we can improve in any way. Before we adjourn, does anybody have anything else that they definitely forgot or want to say? We're all good. Thank you to the Cabinet, Mr. Bartlett, Mrs. Adoma, Mr. Tuttle, Mrs. Crawford, for all your hard work as well. Mrs. Mortelero, thank you for coming out and being our notary today as well. So, motion to adjourn. By Mr. Tobiason, seconded by Mr. Redd. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Have a good night. We'll see you on July 17th. Action-only meeting on July 17th.